...Council Regular Meeting to order on Tuesday, October 4th, 2016. At this time, we'd like to invite Merleene Hesker from Lighthouse Refuge Christian Center to please come forward. She will give our invocation, after which I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Merleene? Please. And make sure that little button is pushed on it. It should be a green light.
It's a green light. Good evening, everyone. Can you just bow your heads? Father, we come, we give you praise, we give you glory, we give you honor. We thank you for tonight. We ask you to be in the midst of our meeting tonight. Father, bless everyone here. Let us have a prosperous meeting, oh God. Cover each and every one. Keep us all in one and in unity. Father, we here for our city. Help us to grow our city and stay in love for each other. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Thank you, Merleene. We appreciate it. At this time, we'll move to the roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapados.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you. That'll take us to item three. We have several proclamations tonight. I think some of you are here for those, so we appreciate that. I'm gonna come down there, and we have a variety of different programs to go through, or excuse me, acknowledgements or awards as it goes with the proclamation. So the first one we're gonna talk about tonight is domestic violence. So I'll be down in a second. So as you know, domestic violence is a very large issue that is getting larger and larger each and every year, and it's kind of unusual. I don't know if sometimes if that's because, you know, more light is being shed on it, or if it's the simple fact that, you know, things are changing in our world. But either way, it is something that affects many of us. And I hope that through things as simple as a proclamation, it will help bring more and more awareness. I know that our police department and others are very influential in doing what they can to stop it, but it starts with us, and it starts with each of us in our own homes. For those of you that are here tonight to help support this proclamation, would you please come forward? Yes, everybody. Come on. Tori. Yes, come on up. Thank you.
Chief Stall, do you wanna come up?
He likes to avoid the limelight, but... So whereas all Arizonans are affected by domestic violence, directly or indirectly, with more than 1 million victims seeking medical assistance for injuries caused by battering, and whereas 1 in 4 women and 1 in 7 men age 18 and older in the United States have been the victims of severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime, and an estimated 30 to 60 percent of families where either domestic violence or child maltreatment is identified, it is likely that both forms of abuse exist. Studies show that for victims who experience severe forms of domestic violence, their children are also in danger of suffering serious physical harm. Whereas, the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but across all economic, racial, affectional preference, and societal barriers. And whereas violence against women and children continues to become more and more prevalent as a societal problem due to the imbalance of power, due to gender and age, and whereas a crime of domestic violence in an individual's privacy violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. Whereas battered women have been in the forefront in efforts to bring peace and equality to the home, this community recognizes the vital importance of increasing the general public's awareness and support of agencies providing services to domestic violence victims. Whereas we hold forth a vision of a community free from domestic violence, now therefore, I, Christian Price, Mayor of the City of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2016 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Maricopa. Let's give these guys a big round of applause for all they do. So I haven't been outside yet, but if you haven't noticed, that's what the purple's for. I think that, I think our entrance is all lit purple. The governor's office also lit the state capitol here yesterday in purple, and many other cities and towns across the state are doing the same thing. So, Kazi, would you come on up? So we're gonna change gears just a little bit here. Thank you for being here. So today, we're gonna talk now about Community Planning Month, and I know that might be something that you don't think much about, but it actually is really important, especially considering what's on the up and coming ballot this year. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities and towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their communities. And the full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. Whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and plan implementation that make the quality of our settlements and environment better. Whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us an opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Maricopa, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners in the City of Maricopa, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Whereas in an effort to provide long-term guidelines for growth, Planning Maricopa: Shaping Our Community, the 2016 City of Maricopa General Plan Update was adopted by the City Council in May of 2016 and will be voted on by each of you, the citizens of Maricopa, in the general election on November 8th, 2016. Now therefore, I, Christian Price, Mayor of the City of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2016 as Community Planning Month in the City of Maricopa in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Thank you very much, Kazi, for all you do. Some nights, we have a lot of these. Some nights, none. Tonight, we have a third one as well, which is a really good reason. So, one of the other things that we're always doing here, and we're gonna probably talk a lot more about that tonight, is what business is in our city, and there are lots of different ways of supporting our local businesses. And one of the groups that exists in our city is the Chamber, City of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce, that helps businesses in a variety of different ways. And so today, we wanted to issue a proclamation on their behalf. It says, "Whereas for the month of October 2016, the Maricopa Chamber of Commerce will recognize and support the efforts of our local nonprofit organizations as a focus of the Chamber's events. And whereas we believe that buying local strengthens local economies, giving local also strengthens communities, and whereas the Chamber for Good is about a donate local campaign, especially for those small organizations that are fueled by the zeal and dedication of a few individuals who see a local need and do their best to fill it. Whereas the key to Chamber for Good is that it leverages the strength and character of our Maricopa Chamber of Commerce to serve as the conduit connecting local donors to charities serving local needs. Whereas the Maricopa Chamber of Commerce encourages all citizens, nonprofit organizations, and businesses to take an active role in engaging in activities that promote and support our local charities and causes. Now therefore, I, Christian Price, Mayor of the City of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim October 2016 as Chamber for Good Month in the City of Maricopa, and urge my fellow citizens to recognize the crucial role of our local nonprofit organizations and the roles that they have in our community and our role and duty that it is to support them." Let's give them a big round of applause. So we invite Sarah, come up. This is, I should've had you come up earlier. I apologize.
Thank you.
So Sarah is the Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and we appreciate all that she does, so thank you. Let's give her a big round of applause when she's up here. Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes our proclamations for this evening. That extends us into the report from the mayor. At this time, I will keep most of my comments to almost nothing, as I have a State of the City tomorrow, so you have to listen to me for an hour, so I apologize to all of you ahead of time, but I hope you come, and you'll learn a lot about the city and what we're up to. With that, though, we do have one thing that I wanted to do. City Council, if you'll join me down here, we wanted to say thank you. So, some of you may know this or may not, but we have a city employee that we are losing to bigger and better things. We always hate to see city employees move on, but also at the same time, always very excited for the potential that it offers in their growth. And so, at this time, the City Council wanted to say thank you to a very special member of our community, and that is Rocky Brown. Rocky, are you here? Come on up. So Rocky has been absolutely crucial. If you don't know much about Rocky, you know, I actually, we go way back in a variety of different ways, believe it or not. I didn't know Rocky that well. I knew his wife. I was a referee for volleyball in the City of Mesa, and I had ref Tiffany in volleyball for many years, and all of a sudden, she shows up one day with this guy, and I get to know Rocky sitting on the bench, and, you know, I don't see him again for a little bit. Well, it turns out, they get married, and all of a sudden, I see him standing outside at Pecan Park one day while I'm, there's been this edict that's gone out because we've had this big monsoon storm that's rolled through, and in this big monsoon storm, it knocked over pretty much most of the remaining pecan trees that we had there. And so, the city, trying to save money, decided, well, what a better way than hauling it all off, then let's just open it up to everybody, come and get it. So I would happen to be going camping that weekend, and I decided, hey, let's go get some of this great pecan wood. It burns real well, and I thought this would be wonderful. So I'm going out there with this wheelbarrow, and who has that awesome job but staying out there all night long for guys like me to come and haul off wood in the cold is Rocky Brown? Because he had just gotten a job with the city. So, we put him to work at the absolute best job first. So Rocky's done a great job of working his way through the city, and at this time, he has accepted a position in the City of Gilbert for something that I think will do great things for him and his career. But in the process, he's been helping us run Copper Sky, and if you've had the opportunity to deal with Rocky and all of the different, I don't wanna call him complaints, but differing opinions on different things that happen at Copper Sky, it's a difficult job. And so, we wanted to make sure we said thank you to him and get him this little, this little thank you. It says, "Successful is the person who leads the world better than they found it. Who never fails to look for the best in others, give the best of themselves." Rocky, with our sincere thanks, Maricopa City Council. Congratulations. We appreciate it, and thank you all for participating. With that, that concludes the report from the mayor. We'll move on to the report from the city manager.
Mayor, council members, there is no items to report tonight, but I did want to mention that you heard about the Rams victory first here.
Thank you, City Manager Rose. We appreciate it. At this time, we'll move to the Call to the Public. We do have three speaker cards for Call to the Public. I will go through those first, and then we will open it up to anybody who wishes to speak. Those that have already submitted speaker cards for an item, I have those here, we'll get to that when we get to that item. So if you are addressing that item, then please just wait for that. Other than that, please be advised that the City Council does not have the ability to respond during a call to the public, as it's not an officially agendized item, but we do wanna hear from you, we do want to know what's on your mind, and so if there's something that comes up that we can get the information to you, we'll make sure that we get a staff member to you and go from there. So with that, please, let's go ahead and call up Tori Anderson. Would you push that button?
Oh, there we go. Mayor Price? City Council, Tori Anderson, lifelong community member in Maricopa. And I come to you as a proud community member who serves on, has the amazing honor to serve on Against Abuse Board of Directors. 12 years ago, with the City Council and the Police Department, we set the goal of bringing domestic violence to the forefront, because we know that it is one of the worst, most dangerous calls that our police officers go on. And even with what's happened in the news this past week, the past two weeks, I'm here to tell you that as a community member, and somebody who is a huge advocate for domestic violence, because I know that it affects all of us. Maybe not in your home, but it's in our schools, it's in our parks, it's in our churches, it's everywhere. I am proud of what this city has done, and what our police department has done to take a stance against stopping the violence in our city. I am proud of where we are, and I am excited for where we're going. The journey has been a long one, and in that 12 years, we've been able to open our Women and Children's Shelter here in Maricopa. It is full, it is serving exactly how it's supposed to, and I'm proud of that. But I just want the community, the council, and the mayor to know how proud I am of you and the decisions that you make for our community every day. I know it's not easy, and I will support you in what you need to be done, what need to have done. But I wanted to thank you for acknowledging October as Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We do have two activities going on. I'm trying not to cry, in case you didn't notice. On the 9th, we have our Taste of Casa Grande, which benefits our Women and Children's Shelters in Casa Grande and Maricopa. It goes from 1 to 4. It's at the property. I am selling tickets, so you can contact me, email, phone number. Our Maricopa Celebration will be on October 15th, and it's gonna be at Copper Sky from 6 to 8. And I'm excited, because we're gonna combine with also our pet rescue services, so we're calling it a mutt strut. But we do have a speaker, we've got some domestic violence information, and from, not only from Maricopa, from Against Abuse, but also from the Canal County Attorney's Office, and from the City of Maricopa. So if you, it's, the one at Copper Sky is free, it's from 6 to 8, there's gonna be a band, it's gonna be more of a celebration, as well as a recognition of those who suffer the effects of dysfunction and family violence. So I hope you'll join us. I hope that if the community is available on the 15th to come out, Copper Sky, 6 to 8, and that you're willing to also join us for our Taste of Casa Grande, which I do have tickets for that, and I am still selling them, even though it's Sunday. You know me, last-minute person. But I would love to sell all my tickets, so give me a call. Email me at torielanderson@gmail.com, and I'll make sure I get the tickets to you. But thank you. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Tori. I appreciate it. Thank you for all your service. There's a flyer on what Tori mentioned about the mutt strut here. I was supposed to mention earlier, so I'm certainly glad that Tori caught me falling down there, so I apologize. But with that, it's a flyer that looks like this. I'm sure there's some in the hallway, and if you need more information, here you go. With that, I have a second speaker card at this time. I think it's David Schaefer? Schaffer? I apologize, yeah, come on up. Apologize if I destroyed your name there. Please, please go ahead and tell us your name for the record.
That would be David Schaefer. And today, I'm here on behalf of Maricopa DECA, MHS, and I wanna mention that our Shark Tank event is coming up pretty soon here, and that is on November 14th. And we do need a, well, we need a lot. We need a lot of sponsors, and we have sponsorship levels that are stated from $100 to $1,000. And what that goes towards is it benefits the students, so it gives them the T-shirts for the event, it gives them prizes, it gives them scholarship opportunities, so that their business project that they will bring to Shark Tank can actually come to life. And last year, we had almost 200 students show up for the event, and this year, we're expecting over 200 students to show up. So it's very important that we get some money and we get some sponsorships to help these students further their business and further their career in marketing. And these students put a lot of effort into these projects, and it would mean a lot to the high school, too, and DECA. If there's any businesses in here today, or if you know of any that would be interested in sponsoring this event. If you guys have any questions, I'll be walking around here. I do have all the flyers here, and I have any information you might need on the Shark Tank event. Thank you so much, Mayor Price, and thank you, everybody, for letting me come up here and tell you about that.
Thank you, David. We appreciate it. At this time, we'd like to invite Becky Check to come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Becky Check. Among other things, most of you are aware that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I'm here to raffle off a first aid kit with the Breast Cancer Awareness ribbon in color of pink.
Becky, will you pull that microphone just a little closer to you?
All right. Is that better?
It's a little better. Thank you.
All right. For additional information about cancer awareness in our community...
Excuse me, Mayor. Becky and I were talking before the meeting started, and we love the purple. Love, love the purple. But we found a creative way for even men to wear pink. And so, we got you some pink wristbands that I'll pass out, so that you can add a little pink to your purple, 'cause both of the causes are very important. So as Becky continues, I just wanted to say, real men can wear pink.
As Councilmember Smith passes those out, in our community, our Relay for Life organization brings forth plenty of information for cancer awareness and information. In a few short months, they will be having their kickoff rally, and additional information can be found at Relay for Life of Maricopa AZ on our Facebook pages. Go ahead and Google them. So at this time, I would like to ask the mayor to please draw our winning raffle ticket.
Thank you, Becky. We appreciate it. Anyone else at this time like to come up to Call to the Public?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and community. Just wanted to remind everyone of the Councilman on the Corner event that's gonna take place on November the 12th. This event, and for those of you who don't know, quarterly, I hold a Counselor on the Corner event with a specific theme. This particular theme is gonna be how to develop a small business in Maricopa. And we'll have representatives there from finance, from economic development, and also from MCE to talk to you about how you can start a small business in Maricopa. So that'll be November 12th, 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 at Copper Sky. November 12th, 8:30 a.m. to 10:00, Copper Sky, How to Start a Small Business. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor Price and council. I wanna thank you first for the proclamation for Chamber for Good Month for October. We really appreciate the council and city's support on that. And I wanted to take a moment to introduce a new initiative that the Chamber is doing for October. It's called our First Annual October Chamber Challenge, and it's an effort to connect our nonprofits in our community, our nonprofits with our community. So for the whole month of October, we're challenging businesses, local leaders, and community members to either complete 10 hours of community service at a nonprofit of your choice in Maricopa, and we do have a list that is provided online, or donate $25 to either of the, well, any of the four foundations that we've selected for this month. The first one being Against Abuse, because of domestic violence awareness. We have FOR Maricopa, the Maricopa Pantry, and the Maricopa Chamber of Scholarship Foundation. That'll be options there. I'd like to take this time to challenge the council to complete that. We'll be sending a press release out tomorrow, and we'll have details on our website, as well as emailed information, but I just wanted to let everyone know that it's happening and that we'd like the community's participation. We've got a ton of great raffle items donated by businesses, including a $100 gift card from Patty Cutray, for people who participate in that and turn their cards into our office by October 31st. So with that, I just wanted to challenge you all to do that, and watch for the information in the news. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We appreciate it. Anyone else at this time like to come forward to Call the Public? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the Call to the Public, and we'll move on to item seven. Council, we have item 7.1 and 7.2, the approval of the past minutes. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Second.
Have a motion in a second for items 7.1 and 7.2. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. That takes us to item eight, which is 8.1. The Mayor and City Councils are here to public comments on text amendment case number TXT 16-01, a request by the City of Maricopa to amend the city's subdivision ordinance. Rudy, I think we're gonna talk very, very briefly on this, after which, after Rudy speaks, if anyone would like to approach the podium and speak to this item and this item only, you may do so, and then we will go from there. Rudy?
Yes, Mayor, council members. Prior to opening up the public hearing, I just wanted to make mention of the subdivision text amendment. As part of city's process for text amendments of going to the zoning code, staff has provided this public hearing process as an opportunity for any developers or any public input being needed to speak on behalf of the item. So we are scheduled for the next schedule. Council members, go ahead and review a work session on the proposed text amendment, but from here on out, this is just to solicit input on the proposed text amendment. With that, thank you. With that, thank you.
Anyone wish to approach the podium and speak to this item? This time. Like Rudy said, there will be a scheduled work session and then an item that will come up on the following agenda, council, on this item again. So if there's additional information or requested at that time, we can certainly get it for you. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearings at this time and move on to the consent agenda. Yes?
You can leave the public hearing open.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, that's right. So we have had a public hearing in the planning and zoning, but we will keep the public hearing open as it remains from the standpoint that we have to go through the work session and then on to the item agenda. So it will remain open in that fashion. So in two weeks approximately, then we will close the public hearing before moving to the item agenda. Is that correct? Okay. Got it. Thank you very much. At this time, we are on the consent agenda. For those of you that were here during the work session, we did take item nine point four off the consent agenda. Everything remains on. Council, I don't think we had any other questions on the consent, so with that, can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on these items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Consent is passed. That will take us to item nine point four. We have a variety of speaker cards for this item, some that wish to speak and some that do not. But before we do that, I think what we will do is, the first speaker card that I received was from Mr. Eric Latch. We will invite him up, after which, we will have a presentation presented to us. As I, let me, I apologize. Let me go back and read the item agenda here. The mayor and city councils are to discuss possibly taking action on approving an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Northern Arizona Technology and Business Incubator to be an incubator operator and provide business training. In no event shall the total compensation under this first amendment exceed $200,000, for which all taxes and other costs, section three of the agreement regarding the term shall be amended to the extent of the initial term of the agreement for one additional year. So at this time, we'd like to bring it back to the public here and have this discussion. So, Mr. Latch, if you would please come forward. I know that you have some questions and concerns. And then we'll be turning the time over to Dan Beach, the director of MCE, to give us a presentation, answer questions, and then we will also call additional folks in the audience up to speak after that time. Okay? So with that, Mr. Latch.
Thank you much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, city council members. And it looks like we have a great crew in the audience tonight. Thank you for all showing up. Some questions that I want to bring up, because I know one of the things with small businesses, and I've lived here in this city for five and a half years now, and one of the big things, when you have a city that just literally blows up overnight, you get population, but you don't have business infrastructure. It takes time to build that. And the thing that I want to come out here and say first off is, number one, I'm not against an incubator program here. I think we need to have something that works with startups and home-based businesses to help them reach that next level. The questions I have aren't just mine. They come from a variety of different small business members and community members in the city that have asked me to speak on this. First off, what are the expectations for an additional, for an additional year of service if the, if a contract extension is approved? There's been some things tossed around, questions asked. What is out there showing that this, this is a legitimate working incubator program? What is the responsibility under the contract to both MCE? And what are the expectations of reporting back to the city? Is there a quarterly reporting process? Is this something that's available to the public to be able to sit back and say, okay, they've added five new businesses this month, or this quarter? Along with that, they've created 10 new jobs. Those are, those are questions that arise. You know, we don't want to just have an incubator program just so that businesses can go there and say, oh, well, yeah, I use it for a meeting place. It doesn't do our, it doesn't do our small business infrastructure any good. And that's, that's part of what this was supposed to be doing, is shoring up the idea of small businesses and home-based businesses being able to grow and prosper in this community. I guess the big question is, where do you find these results? The success stories? I know MCE manages the M Loan Program, and it's been asked, you know, how many loans have been requested, how many approved, or is this, is this a working thing? Now, I'm going to assume, I see a lot of businesses in this audience, so I'm going to assume there's some success stories out here, and that's why they're here tonight. So if there's no results, is there, you know, what, what is the next steps? Are we, you know, is this program working? Because the question comes into play that, in the city, I hear this constantly, we don't have money. So originally, I know it was approximately $200,000 to launch this program for the first two years. And then I'm assuming that the third year was, is this the third year now, or are we going into the third year? I don't want to kind of screw that up, but now you're looking at $200,000 for an additional year, basically. You know, so the question arises, what is that for? What is that actually paying for? What's that additional $200,000 going to do for this city? Is it going to create jobs? Is it going to help the tax base here? Those are, those are things that people are asking, but I don't know if they're asking them here. So I've always been that person that figures, you know what, I know the majority of people up here on council, and you and I, Mr. Mayor, have had many long conversations about small business in this community. And I'm not, I'm not afraid to say, we've had some arguments about them, too. But we always walk away shaking hands and saying, what can we do to find a solution? Are there, are there results of job creation? Do we know if there's been any increase in the tax base here? You know, those, those are, and I guess the final question would be, what happens if the city does not approve the contract extension? Is there, does that mean that NASAT, the parent organization, says, oh, we're out of here tomorrow? Is there, is there a plan for that? And I'll say one more, and then, you know, are there other options available? Other incubator programs, or are there local solutions? And so I wanted to bring those up, and I did give Dan Beach a copy of these questions to, you know, to make it fair, and I offered that up to the city council, too, because if we're not working on the solutions in this city, what are we doing? So I'm here as a concerned resident of the city and as a small business owner, and I want to challenge, you know, people to speak up on this subject and go from there, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Eric. We appreciate it. And like you said, all the city council members have a, have a copy of the questions. So with that, we will go ahead and call Dan Beach up to give us a presentation on this to all of you, as well as us, obviously. And, you know, Dan, you have a copy of these questions, so if you'd like to answer them as you go through the presentation, and if council has additional questions, we'll go from there. But again, we will also get to all the speaker cards at some point after your presentation. So, thank you. Proceed.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council, what's an entrepreneur? Some people, we think of Steve Jobs, or Steve Case, or Elon Musk. But to MCE, an entrepreneur could be an artist who's working to build a livelihood by, through their art. It could be a man or woman who is working out of their home, creating a service business, like a janitorial service, who's trying to start a small business. Or it could be someone who has rented out a location in Maricopa, one of our commercial sites, and is building a business in that site. To us, all of those people are entrepreneurs. Why is it important that we have entrepreneurs in Maricopa? Because by and large, those are where the new jobs come from, in our community and in our nation. A survey done by the Coppin Foundation, which is very strong on small business, computed that there were three million jobs being created every single year from entrepreneurs. Another survey basically said that in that nasty period of time between 2006 and 2009, it was the small businesses, the small firms, the new ones with under 20 employees, that were creating the growth in jobs in the U.S., 8.6 percent, whereas the old, big companies were basically shedding jobs. Another study by the Key Research Center said that, that an entrepreneur with employees had a median of three employees and an average of 8.6 employees. Thirty percent of U.S. jobs are being held by entrepreneurs and their employees. Think about it for a second. Three out of 10 jobs in the U.S. are entrepreneurial jobs. So what does that have to do with us? In the city of Maricopa, we've got some large businesses, but the largest business in town, the largest employer in town, is small business, is entrepreneurs. Using information from the city of Maricopa Economic Development Department and the estimate from the Cosman Foundation, there are approximately 1,050 entrepreneurial jobs in the city of Maricopa, and the MCE client companies represent 124 of those. So what does that have to do with economic value in Maricopa? Please look at the numbers with me. The 1,050 jobs in, that are created by entrepreneurs every year in Maricopa is equal to approximately $48 million in wages being generated for our city and in our city. Another study found that because those jobs are local, because they're entrepreneurial jobs, $37 million of that is being recirculated in our local community. Additionally, those jobs are creating $7 million in state and local tax revenues. Entrepreneurs are creating a huge economic impact in the city of Maricopa. Our mission statement at MCE is to create, to increase those successful entrepreneurial, innovative small businesses, either whether they're in the city or relocating to the city. And we take that very serious, and we, our answer is always yes. We say yes to coaching and consulting. In the fiscal year that ended in June, sorry, July, we coached, we recorded 490 hours of one-on-one coaching with individual entrepreneurs here in the city of Maricopa at MCE. Those are the hours we recorded. I would guess there's probably another 50 percent where people just walked in, we sat down and talked to them without an appointment. Estimating a value, $171,000 in value to MCE clients and other people that come onto this. We say yes to training. We do training on art. We do training, the Pro Series is a two hours with ASU students. We do empower training for women and minorities. Tech Chef, Wired, Social Buzz, all about social media and the important technology. Ian Pressa is a Hispanic group. The mayor has been a part of that, engaged also with Mr. Mayor. Mike Ritchie did it last month with us, is talking to the thought leaders in business in our community. Achieve is about reaching human potential, and we're working on developing a food biz 520. So we're looking, and we know there are a lot of people in town who want to start a food business. We want to help them, and we're starting up a training for that. We've hosted in the last year 70 some workshops for the business community, attended by 690 business guests, and we're estimating a value of about $93,000. That's using the average cost of a Dale Carnegie course. The number's probably low, because we figured it for an hour course, and a lot of ours are longer. We say yes to events. Art in the City was a one-time so far pop-up gallery for artists in the city. We had approximately 22, 23 artists who got to show their works and sell right off the wall. We are very involved with Shark Tank, working with the high school. This is the third annual, and we're excited to be a part of them. Mr. Wade was one of our MCs for last year, and I think we had an awesome time. One of the entrepreneurs was 11 years old. His idea was for a, he's smiling, was for a sugared tea bag. He actually won an award to, it's a scholarship to Seed Spot, which is a social entrepreneur event in the city of Phoenix. Unfortunately, he's not old enough. So when he gets to be 16, he actually has this award waiting for him. He's got a few years, but he's going to be an awesome entrepreneur here in the city of Maricopa. We say yes to science and technology. We're excited to be a, a part of, and a cosponsor for the Maricopa Science City. This will be the third annual event in 19, sorry, 2017. The city is a cosponsor, as well as the STEAM Foundation. We've handed out 6,500 passports. That's sort of the entry into the Science City, and of those, 675 were returned. That means that kids and adults went to a minimum of six different exhibits and learned about science in Maricopa. In addition, as part of Science City, we attended the 2015 and the 2016 Innovation Arizona Summit, and in 2015, we actually had a display table there and did a presentation on MCE in a breakout session. For 2017, we were very excited to join Councilwoman Smith as part of the Maricopa Rocket Challenge. My understanding is the plan is to launch something on the order of 590 rockets at Copper Sky on the salsa festival, Science City. The rocket launches are going to go, I understand, four at a time, and they're calculating that somewhere between nine o'clock and one o'clock in the afternoon, we'll get all of those rockets launched. So it's going to be a really awesome event, and then we'll have some of those rockets on display then at the Science City. We were partnered with the city, the Chamber of Commerce, CAC, and the Monitor to create the fifth semi-annual expo tonight. A lot of you were there tonight, and we, I would say it was an awesome event. Both in the spring and this fall, we were sold out of all of our exhibitor tables. I don't know where we're going to put them next. The college is saying maybe outside on the veranda out there. We have some space out there. We had a great attendance, and it was a really good, great event. Spring 2017, it looks like it's going to be April. We're talking to the college about a date for that also. We have been very involved with Arizona At Work and with Central Arizona College in presenting jobs, not just the idea of a non-job, an entrepreneurial job, never working a real job again, but also we're able to present to the people that come to those job fairs, the jobs that are available from our client companies, and we're excited about that. I believe we're at four or five of those job fairs at this point. We do say yes to artists and the arts. We are a proud sponsor of the Art in the Veranda Preview Show at MCE, and it'll be available for anyone to see all this month. We also work with Art in the Veranda and the Maricopa Arts Council to present artists, arts and artisans at City Hall and the City Library. If you haven't seen the gallery, when you get done with it, please go out this hallway out here. There's about, I think, eight or 10 individual artists represented in a variety of medias, and also a nice exhibit at the City Library. We do that because we think that, we know that, there's, the business of art is very impressive. Of our 14 art exhibits, we estimate 262 guests were recorded at the artist reception. The Smithsonian has an interesting, they value the value of an art exhibit, and using their numbers, we basically, we value the exhibits at about $95,000. And using their numbers and others, we're estimating the job creation value of artists in Maricopa, and this is an incredibly conservative estimate of $2.2 million. Phenomenal number. We say yes to clients. We have four resident clients. They have rented out a small cubicle in the MCE building, and we work more closely with them on a regular basis. Additionally, we are working with 76 affiliated clients. We say yes to jobs, wages, and taxes. Our calculations, and I think they are also conservative, is that the client companies at MCE have 124 employees. Those employees generate approximately $5.6 million in wages. Again, the recirculating effect is another $4.3 million in the community. We're talking about in Maricopa, and in tax dollars of $829,000, $830,000 in tax revenues being generated by the MCE client company employees. We're very proud that 61 percent of our client companies are women-owned. That is against a national average of just 8 percent. We're also very proud that 40 percent of our client companies are minority-owned, and again, that is against a very small national percentage. Minority-owned businesses are one of the fastest-growing, largest-growing sector in the entrepreneurial market, and we're proud to be a part of that growth. Our clients come from Maricopa and are here in Maricopa. 10 of the MCE clients are currently operating out of commercial spaces. 40 are operating in Maricopa at a home-based spaces. Six of them are Maricopa-based nonprofits, and 15 of them are still in formation. 81 percent of our clients operate within the city of Maricopa. 6 percent are operating in the unincorporated area around Maricopa. All of those, we've talked to, all want to bring their business into this city. One of the things that I spend a lot of time on is one-on-one coaching with clients, and it's really exciting for me. I've got a long history of doing that. I've got a long history of doing it all across the country, talking to clients, bringing them in, asking them the questions about their business, and then helping them to understand where the potential is for their business. Some of those, we have tools we are happy to work with, with them. We use what's called the Small Business Canvas, which sort of has, it's a one-page business plan. It makes a company look at their entire business on one page. Additionally, we generated about six other additional tools that we've brought, MCE and NACET have brought to the table, to work with clients and, again, help them understand client acquisition, the tasks, the resources, the key activities that each business has to provide. We do work with the arts because we believe that they are an important part of the business community. We are also doing a lot of, I want to say, very simple business things. One of the number-one questions we get is, how do I start my business? How do I make it legal? We spend a lot of time with clients, helping them create LLCs, helping them get EINs, helping them get tax numbers, helping them get a city of Maricopa license. We have that resource on our website, but I do it a lot of times one-on-one with clients. I guess at this point, I'm not quite to the attorney who's done 1,000 of them, but I'm working toward that number. We have had some success stories, and I'm happy to share a couple of them. Precious Hands Healthcare is currently working at staffing in the Maricopa County prison facilities and in a variety of nursing homes across the, both Pinala and the Maricopa Counties. When they came to us, it was basically one and a half employees. They became a resident client, and currently, you can see the numbers, in August, they had 26.5 employees. I just asked them yesterday, it's up to 30 employees. I believe they will be, could be Maricopa's first million-dollar company, small business, entrepreneur, MCE client. Another client is King &amp; Queen Clothing Accessory. Before they came to us, they were working at a small upstairs, 800-square-foot resale storefront. They are one of our clients. They did receive one of our M loans. They've just recently moved into a brand-new space next to TrueGrit Tavern, 1,600 square foot. If you haven't been in the store, it's beautiful. They've done an incredibly good job of merchandising that. We do, are, we are a part of the M Loan. The M Loan is, was, is a USDA grant to the city of Maricopa to create and sustain jobs in and around the city of Maricopa with low-interest loans to businesses. This is not a grant, it was a grant from the USDA to the city, but it's not a grant to the businesses. These are loans. They are low interest, 5% interest. They are from 12 to 36 months, depending on the amount of the loan. We had 114 inquiries. We had six applications. Nine loans were made. Using the numbers from those applications, we estimate that 135 jobs will be created in five years, another $6.1 million in job wages. And from the numbers, we are probably ahead of those projections at this time. M Loans are still available because this is a revolving loan fund, between $2,500 and $25,000. I didn't do it. Okay. I'm excited to be able to tell the MCE Maricopa story across the state. We've done five, sorry, four separate workshops for NACET and Flagstaff on a variety of subjects. We were able to meet with AZBIA, which is the Arizona Business Incubator Association, so that's an association of all of the incubators across the country, or across the state. We also did a food finance forum for the Local First Arizona, and actually, I realize it's not on here, but we did a workshop with ED, Economic Development Department, for the Economic Development Directors of Arizona, all about incubation. And we've had, the city of surprise came and visited MCE and is very excited about our model. I also met with one of the economic development persons from the city of Apache Junction, who is interested in our model, and there's been talk that Sierra Vista is also interested in the MCE model because we are so different. A part of that difference is the chance to go to Florida. I spent, gave a four-hour presentation on hybrid incubation, which is what MCE is. We're not the usual incubator. We do things differently, and we had a chance to really tell entrepreneurs and incubators from literally across the country and around the world, about half the attendance were around the world, talking to them about how we do it here. So we do a few things. We do client consulting, we do training, we do events, we do networking, we do the M Loan, we do the expo. We do it with a variety of groups. I do it with an awesome team. I'm a serial entrepreneur. I'm a former business owner and consultant. I am a certified incubator manager, and I am also certified in the Business Model Canvas. I work with a phenomenal team. Tracy is my Jane of all trades, although she says it with a better accent than I do. She is a part-time person, but she basically runs, makes sure that most of our events happen, and they happen very smoothly. Grant is our part-time, very part-time, about a quarter-time marketing director. So if you've seen our new website, it's very much under development, but it's got a large and growing resource section. So if you want to know about how to start a business, a lot of the data is there. Michael is developing, he is an intern, he is working on his master's degree in finance from Colorado School, sorry, CSU, and he is developing some incredibly awesome financial tools. One of those actually allows an entrepreneur to sort of create a projected financial statement by answering about a dozen questions. So it's a really incredible tool, and that's something that we've developed right here at MCE. Chris and Randy are working, also both interns. Chris is at GCU. He's a student there. If you've seen any of our Facebook posts, any of our Facebook Live, a lot of our email advertising, all of our videos, Chris is creating that. Randy has been doing a phenomenal job of our press releases. I don't know if you saw, there was a great, huge, two-column story on page two of the Maricopa Monitor. That was, that was all Randy. She's created a lot of things. So we are doing phenomenal things with a very small team. We are part of NACET. What is, why is that important? NACET is the oldest and largest, actually, and newest to incubator in the state. NACET is also running besides MCE, incubators in the city of Chandler on native lands, two SB DC offices, both in Flagstaff and Page. We are a part of them. MCE is a part of NACET. What that does is it brings all of the NACET capabilities, the teams, the facilities, brings them to MCE clients. If one of our clients needs a high-tech wet or dry lab, we have access to that. If they need $50 million in high-tech 3D printers, we have access to that. Anything you can imagine that an entrepreneur needs is available through the NACET network. Finally, I really encourage large businesses, small businesses, home businesses, startups, entrepreneurs, and any other form of business to take advantage of what we have at MCE. We want you to come in. We want people to take advantage of all of the things we offer them, the training, the one-on-one coaching, whatever we can, whatever we, we always should say yes. So whatever you need as an entrepreneur, come in and use our space and work there. Whatever you need, we're here for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Wade.
Not a question, Mayor, but just as a comment. This is, this is exactly the reason why I asked MCE to come and partner on the Councilman on the Corner event on Saturday, just that type of depth and that type of information that we need. So if you're interested, come check it out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Councilmember Smith.
Hi, Dan.
Hi, ma'am.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Just a couple notes. The number of hours one-on-one, 490, I think is a great start. I think I'd like to see that number increase, but I don't know that it's definitely all on you. But one idea that I was considering and wanted to know if you had considered yourself is, I've typically been familiar with what they call round tables, where you invite businesses, business owners in, and you find out, so you're being proactive in bringing them in and finding out what are their needs, what's missing in their small business, because I hear all the time, very similar to what Eric's talking about, small businesses saying, you're not providing what I need. And so I tell them about MCE, and I know some of them have come and some haven't, but maybe even you inviting them and doing round tables and finding out what their needs are, so that maybe not the one-on-one numbers grow, but maybe they do, but you're one on, you know, five, or, and asking our local businesses, especially those home businesses, small businesses, what their needs are in a proactive way. Have you done any of that, and would you consider that if you haven't?
We, we are actually considering, we're working on two of those, probably, let me say three. The one-on-one, we had a meeting with the SBDC in Pinala County, and they are open to sending us coaches, counselors, to do coaching in our facility, and so that's on track. I am working to put together two things that are similar to what you're asking for. One is, I want to put together the fancy word is cohort, where we pull a group of six to eight companies together, and we sort of study basic processes of business over a six, eight, 12-week period as a group. So I think some of that one-on-group. The other one is, yeah, I'd love to start a round table, and I think it's something that, I actually went to Michigan and did training on, so I'm certified.
Oh, excellent.
So it's something that I definitely want to do.
I think it would be really fruitful to find out what are those businesses that Eric's talking to, and what do they have to say in terms of what their needs are? And I think if you're inviting them in, it really makes it very welcoming for them to come in and not only hear from you and share their experience, but to also find out what you have to offer, because I think those that I know that I've shared with and have gone to you have always reported back to me that they're amazed at what they came back with, you know, information, business plans, whatever the case might be, that they really didn't have any idea how to tackle as a small business. And so I've been very impressed with what I've heard back from those. But I'd like, I'd like, I'd like MCE to be more proactive in reaching out, I think, and bringing some of those that haven't spoken, and understanding what you have to offer. And then lastly, the one thing that I've, I've tried hard to study millennials because they're an interesting group. And I even talked with our own Ryan from the Planning Department because he's done studies on millennials, and I find them very interesting, but, you know, they're our future. And so I understand that the, a very high percentage of millennials want to be entrepreneurs. So for that reason, I find this very important for our city, considering the fact that that is the next generation growing up to be leaders and business owners. And so I like the fact that you're focused on the student entrepreneurs. Shark Tank, love that program, and if you've never attended, you should write that date down and go attend because it is fascinating.
It's fun.
And then I love the Student Science City as well, because, you know, science is going to be huge, and so I love the way that you're reaching out to the youth. So, yeah, if you would consider reaching out and doing focus groups or round tables, I think that would be great, and I'd love to see that number one-on-one hours grow in the next year.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Kimball.
Dan, thanks for the presentation. You guys do a lot, a lot of stuff, a lot of events, you participate in a lot of things. And I just had a question. This, you had mentioned the Precious Hands Healthcare, right? That I believe to be a very good example of how incubation can help a company expand and grow and increase employees, and ultimately create, I mean, that's what an incubator's for, is to help people start small, and if they want to stay small, they can, or get bigger. My question is, how many inquiries, not how many, do you get a lot of inquiries from potential employers or businesses, not necessarily in the healthcare field, but want to start small and then potentially grow and have, you know, 30, 40 employees? Or do you, are the majority of your inquiries and clients small-based, like where they're going to work for themselves? I mean, do you get my question?
I do. Hard to answer, because a part of what we are doing is raising their awareness as well as their knowledge. A lot of small business people come in with an idea, but they're thinking about really creating a job, but my push, very strong, is no, that's not what we're about, and that's not what you should be about. What you should be about is creating a business. And a business means hiring employees, but it takes, it's a different structure, both mentally and physically. So we push very hard for people to get out of their small mindset and to get into a larger, thinking about business. One of my quotes that everybody quotes is, it's not a job, it's a business. I can't tell you a percentage that come in thinking I'm going to create a big company, but we do have some.
That's what I was curious about, and obviously, they couldn't, somebody who wants to, say, start a big company at a shooting range or something, they could take your advice and all the things that you guys have to offer, and then they could find a spot and create something like that. And I think that is a huge value add for what MCE offers. But I have had, when this item came up, a couple constituents call me and say, hey, we like the idea of the incubator, but I don't really see them providing an avenue to create what was, or have the entrepreneur create a small business and then build it into multiple employees. But you have a great example of how that helped and how that worked, so I'd like to commend you on that. And you guys, obviously, I've never used MCE, but given all the information that you laid out in your, in your presentation, there's a lot of tools there, and I would, I would definitely tell somebody, if you, if you've never, if you ever thought about starting a small business, calling your friend works, works wonders too, but going to MCE and utilizing the services they provide, I mean, there's, there's a plethora of services, so I'd like to just commend you on that.
Thank you. I'm actually better at working with that size company. I'm good at working with startup entrepreneurs, but I, my most, a lot of my practice has been working with those companies that are a couple hundred thousand dollars that want to grow into a five or six million dollar company. So I have a lot of tools, my toolbox for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Manfredi.
This, we let everybody else turn it on, and I forget. Great presentation. You know, to build on what Councilmember Kimball said just a couple minutes ago, it's when people come in and they'll call, and I've received calls, or come into Maricopa and they have a small business. I've received calls, and I've worked with people, maybe hired a handyman, I had a small business license here, and he came to my house, he did a couple things, and he was doing it on the side. He worked up in Intel. He was doing woodworking on the side, and he called me, and, oh, I called him, I had him come to my house to do a couple things, and I'm like, do you realize you have a business here? And he was like, well, it's just some side money. I'm like, no, it's a business. Give a call to Dan. So I gave him your number, he called you, and he's four or five times what he was doing beforehand, because he didn't understand how to set up, how to incorporate, how to, how to build a business plan. We have a car wash company that was out there doing a couple car washes, and they went to you, and they're growing. You know, so it's businesses like that, that they don't understand that they have a business, right? And a friend of mine, he actually was doing handyman work, RNS handyman work, right? That's a plug. So he actually came to you, and he helped with the, you helped him with incorporation, so how to become LLC. So things like that, and that's what brings excitement to this for me, is because you take somebody who's doing something on the side, like you mentioned, it's a job for them, it's a little bit, a little, little extra money, and you create a business, and those businesses will grow. You know, a couple of these people have told me that they're going to be hiring people because they've gotten busy, and that's what this is for. Granted, it is for helping growing the bigger business and making them go from, you know, like you said, a couple hundred thousand to a couple million, or maybe a couple hundred million, you never know what's going to catch on. But it also helps the people who, they have a bright idea, but they don't know where to go with the idea, and that's where you guys come in. So I commend you on the work that's been done. I wish that we could do more and, and have more staff and grow it the way I've seen it grow in Chandler, where they have an incubator, where you go in and they have the 3D printers and they have everything you need to start your business, and it's all free. You can go in there and use it all. So I would love to get to the point where we have all that available, because that's where you get innovative thinking processes and technology working, and that's when you blow up and you have something like the Price Corridor.
And we stole an idea from you. Our conference room, when it isn't being used for events, we're actually making it a workspace, and we're inviting any business in town that needs a place to work, wants to go to, get away from home, or get away from their office and come in and work. It's free, we have two networks, so you can connect to the internet guaranteed, never been down, and it's available just to come in and work. And we have several companies that do that on a regular basis. But that was from you.
And when the kids are home during the summer, I might stop in and use them.
Please do, and we're air-conditioned.
Yeah, but thank you.
Other questions at this point? Yes, Councilmember Smith.
I just want to vouch, as long as I have it straight, I was just telling Councilmember Wade that Precious Hands, they were at the expo today?
Yes, they were.
Yes, and I spoke with them for a long time. I just want to vouch, they are extremely excited. They're in a hiring mode, so they're in, into caretaking, and I can't remember what else was on their list. Caretaking was important to me because my sister does that. Caretaking was important to me because my sister does that.
They have a really interesting niche. They are providing healthcare workers for the Maricopa, county of Maricopa, women's prison system.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah. So it's a really interesting little niche, it's hard to get into, and it's hard to get employees for, they have a whole process they have to go through. But they found that little niche and they're growing company. The lady that you talked to was not the owner.
Oh, and she's not even the owner.
No, she is an employee.
And she was way excited and telling me that they were hiring and excited about MCE. So, I mean, when we have that kind of crazy excitement in a small business startup, I just think that's really thrilling.
Yeah, thank you.
So thank you.
Any other questions at this time? So, sorry, I'm sitting here counting. Just wanted to kind of quickly go through this. I have 25 speaker cards that do not wish to speak, but are for the business incubator in some fashion or issue thereof. Received some emails today in regards to experiences with MCE. We can, you know, this will all be part of the public record, but of course, you know, talk about going through pro formas, creating solid business plans and marketing, a priceless asset to the small business startups in the community. We have appreciated everything they've done for us and others, and that's from Marina Love. I do have four or five speaker cards that wish to speak, so I'd like to call them up here at this time. If you have heard what you want to hear, if you have heard what you want to hear today and do not wish to speak, when I call your name, please just let me know, but if you do, please come on up. The first one is Judith Zemont. We'll give you each about two minutes each as we have to get through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council. Thank you, Dan Beach. I am a Maricopa entrepreneur. I am a composer. Yes, my music is played by orchestras around the world, but in Maricopa, I'm a business of one. I also wear the hat as one of four co-directors of Maricopa Arts Council. And in that capacity, I have had dealings for several years with MCE. All I can say is that the arts as a sector seem to be a gypsy population in Maricopa. We are somewhat disenfranchised, we are nonprofits, and yet we charge tickets for our performance prices to get in. Well, not this year in the expo, but most of the time. And what we have found is, being without a place, being without a home of our own in a city building, any building in the city, we've found a very warm welcome, all of the arts at MCE. And in particular, the visual arts. Something that Dan did not stress in his presentation is that MCE created the very first gallery in this city. For years now, he has featured monthly exhibits, one-person shows at MCE. And he is a prime mover, along with Maricopa Arts Council and Art on the Veranda, in getting started the galleries here at City Hall, which took some heavy lifting and we are very happy to see in place to good effect. And also the brand-new gallery that just began at Maricopa Public Library. More than most, the arts, like Blanche Dubois speaks in A Streetcar Named Desire, depend on the kindness of strangers. And in this respect, Dan Beach and MCE have not been strangers. The welcome that they give, not just to the arts, but all small businesses, one thing that was not stressed in your presentation, was that the informational sessions that you run, the seminars, the lunch meetings, first of all, they're held at great times of day, they're held at times of day that, that fit into a business schedule. They're held directly after work or during lunchtime and lunch is provided. They're also held at very nominal fees, when fees are charged at all, so that anybody will feel welcome to come. And what do they offer? It's not morale building, it's not gee, Maricopa, we're great. It's skill sets being introduced, it's hard data, it's mechanisms, it's technology to use to grow and expand your business and reach a larger client base. All of these things are some byproducts of what MCE is really all about. And the arts, and especially the visual arts community in this city, would not be what it is with so many monumentally successful photographers and painters and weavers and sculptors without the push from behind on a constant basis of Dan Beach at MCE. I can't stress enough that this one special gentleman possesses the double skills that you look for all the time. He has a vision of the next three steps Maricopa can take. But he also understands he functions in the here and now. He's a great team player all around, with city folk, with the Chamber of Commerce, with us average Joes and Janes, and yet he spurs us on. Please, please continue to support and expand your support of MCE. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Appreciate it. David Chaffee. David, are you in the room? Like to speak? Come on up. If you keep it to about a minute, that'd be great.
Yes, sir. So, so I want to talk a little bit about what MCE has done with the high school and how much support they've given us. And in Maricopa Decca, we've seen MCE quite a lot. They helped create Shark Tank in the first place, that is the whole reason we have Shark Tank, is thanks to MCE and their support. They welcomed us, they gave us the right names and the right places to go and get sponsorships, and as well of making it possible in the city. As well as the, what is it, SciTech, right? Science City, my bad. The Science City also gave the high school an opportunity to come in and show off their robotics club. And there was a couple other classes there as well, I could not name them all. But MCE has done so much to support the high school and it would be a shame to see that go away. And it means a lot to me as a student that a business like this, an incubator, is coming into a high school and showing us, here's how to run a business, here's how things go, I'll get you in the right contact with certain people, even to students. I'm 16-years-old and I walked into MCE and I've told them I want to run a business and they gave me an internship. And gave me an opportunity to see how businesses work and how businesses grow and how the world works. And it was an incredible opportunity and I want to thank MCE for that while they're here, and the city of Maricopa for helping them in the past. Thank you so much, everybody, for letting me come up.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Like to offer the podium to Brett Leavitt, please. Brett?
Thank you, Council and Mayor, for having me. Just an invitation from Dan Beach. I've also come, come up here, kind of representing the, maybe the small, from work-from-home business. Kind of, me and my wife are running an online doula, labor support for expectant pregnant women, online doula training service. And we've been running our business for about four years and kind of came to a, kind of turning point two months back and started looking for help. And I'd had previous exchanges with the Entrepreneurship Center under different leadership, and so I was a little hesitant to reach out, but then I was able to set up an appointment online and meet with Dan. And the last two months have been a huge turnaround and change in what we're doing. We're just getting started. But I really appreciate the resources that are available and especially having a workspace outside of the home. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Appreciate it. Herman Nurenberger? Herman?
Newberger.
Newberger, apologize.
Good evening. My name is Herman Zeleg Newberger. I'm a pencil artist under Through Windows of Time. And one of my first encounters with Dan and MCE was quite, it was a neat thing. Dan worked out, and this is something, by the way, that Judith, who covered almost everything, missed. Sorry, Judith. He negotiated with the landlord of the strip center that he was in to create, we call it a pop-up gallery, in a vacant store that was just vacant, doing nothing, and made a pop-up gallery being, we could only stay there as long as, well, as long as the landlord permitted us to do it. Believe it was for a period of about a week. It was really the first time I met Dan. I was impressed with what he did. Never saw this before, and in fact, I tried to encourage Dan to work with the landlord to get some other property. But that didn't quite work out yet. But it might down in the future. I just want to say that Dan has promoted at least the artist form of what is created in Maricopa. He's, he's for us. He has promoted many things. Judith mentioned the gallery here in City Hall, the one at the library, in his own store, in his own place. And it would be a shame to not extend his contract because he would be sorely missed. I think it would be a very, very hard act to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Herman. Appreciate it. If we can call up Deb Jay? Deb? Okay, perfect. Thank you. She just had a comment here and she's in favor of MCE. Jennifer Saltenberger? Jennifer? Jennifer?
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jennifer Saltenberger. I run a company called Hashtag Bid It, it's an online business. And when I moved to Maricopa, I wanted to play more golf and relax. I had a consulting business earning about $10,000 a month and I inadvertently invented something called Hashtag Bid It. So it's my opinion that taking away MCE for the millennials and the entrepreneurial people that have technology in their existence that can actually give that back to the community, which is what I've been able to do through the services of Dan Beach. I've looked in several places and I found the support that I needed in order to give back to this community. And I don't think that would have been possible without Dan. So thank you very much for helping me that way. And the other thing I'd like to say is, I actually went out of the city of Maricopa to Awatuki and to Chandler and couldn't find the support I needed to understand how to scale a patent-pending technology. I was really excellent at being a business consultant, so everybody knows, I just wasn't excellent at scaling a business. And if it wasn't for advice that I got from Dan, you know, it's kind of like checks and balances when you're an entrepreneur, not a want-a-preneur, but a real entrepreneur, you want checks and balances to validate what you're thinking is true and correct. And about a year and a half ago, that happened with Dan. So I would advise anyone that has the opportunity to get on his schedule and meet with him to just use him in whatever way you possibly can, and it would be absolutely insane to get rid of the MCE. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it. Kahende? Come on up. And I know I'm going to butcher your last name, so you go ahead and say it.
It's just as easy as it looks.
Uh-huh.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thanks for taking my, taking me, allowing me to speak. I was actually a part of MCE the very first day it opened, under different management, and it was strictly tech. And since Dan came on board, it's been open to any kind of business, every business, any, any entrepreneur that wants to grow their business. I've been a business owner for almost 12 years. I've gone through a dollar store, I've gone through a cellphone store. I knew how to work the business, but not run the business. I wore all the hats, but coming to MCE, Dan kind of sat us down and said, "You know what, these are things that you need to do as, to help your business grow, to kind of run your business." And without, without those, without those tools and resources, we're just kind of spinning circles. So I would say, taking away MCE will be detrimental to a small business in Maricopa here. Actually, I've seen them grow from the very first day they opened till, till where we are now. And we've grown tremendously as, as a business from what they've given to us. So I would advocate that we keep them as long as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Gloria Smith. Gloria, come on up.
Good evening, all, and thank you for allowing me to speak. As you know, my name's Gloria Smith. I'm a resident, a property owner, and a small business owner here in Maricopa. Some of you may have seen my picture in the paper. Most people don't know my name, but they call me the Medicare Lady. And the reason I say that is because I am a sales agent. I offer community services to help people understand the benefits of Medicare, but also under 65. When I came to Dan to talk to him, I was actually just trying to get to my idea of how to go from where I was to where I needed to be. And one of the first things he said to me was that, well, what he said earlier, "It can't be a job, it has to be a business." And I said, "Well, it is a business." Long story short, space opened in the building and I was able to become a resident there. And that made it possible for me to get off the road so much and people to come to me. The shortest story of this is that my business has increased roughly 30% in the last 12 months because I have a place now for people to come. I'm still on the road and I do the, you know, the close-touch one-on-one, but I've extended myself and I've been able to hire an additional person to come to the office when I'm not there, I'm out doing other things or doing seminars. So please don't take it away. That's all I have to say. If you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Gloria. I don't think we have anything to say. Thank you very much. And the final speaker, the final speaker card at this time is Glenda Kelly. Glenda, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I hate speaking, but I love Dan. So I have gone to him with numerous problems and he's always really helped me. I love his workshops and technology is not my thing, but I've been so excited about some of these workshops that it's gotten me motivated to do a little bit more. I haven't started, done it yet, I apologize. But he's shown me a way to really promote my business. And I have three employees who live in Maricopa, so they spend their money in Maricopa. And without Dan's help, I don't think I'd be where I am right now. So I'd like to keep them. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Dan wants me to tell you a story. Because sometimes I get so busy and I will go there and I will fire him because I can't work everything that I've got to do. So I fire him. And then when things get slow, I rehire him. And then I get busy again. So I fired him three times already. So that's my Dan story. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. Appreciate it. So, so Council, obviously we've spent a significant amount of time on this issue. You know, we've had a variety of questions. I think that there are always more questions that can be asked. But, you know, just very quickly, as you all know from, from the audience perspective, or at least from this council, you know, when I was elected in 2012, I committed to this, I committed to this city that I would do all in my power to do everything I could to accelerate economic development in any way, shape, or form that that might mean, whether that's businesses that you see being built outside, or whether that's, you know, helping the small business that I think we've had many testimonials tonight on. And there are so many different ways in which economic development happens. I think it's as broad as the econo, as the political spectrum and theorems as to what works and what doesn't. But in that promise that I made to you in 2012, I spend perhaps 40 to 60% of every week out at economic development forums, beating the pavement, going out and trying to find new ways of, of doing things in the city. And I was one of the largest supporters of MCE after touring several incubators throughout Phoenix and Chandler and Awatuki and other areas. And in that process, what I learned was, is there's no one right way to do it. What I learned was, is there's many ways to do it. And there are certainly ways in which not to do it. And, and that is not having anything. And so, you know, while it's important to justify expenditures, it's important to justify budgets, it's important to show results, at the end of the day, this is harvesting, this is farming. this is farming, and taking the long-term view of growing a business. This is not like walking into a facility and ordering a steak, and in the next 30 minutes, I have my steak come out, and I pay my $35, and I leave. That's not the way you grow businesses. In growing a business, it's like farming. You have to designate the land. You have to cultivate the land. You have to find a way to make the proper season come along and have the right seed to go in that land, and you have to cultivate it, and you have to water it, and you have to give it food, and you have to do all these things. And then at the end of all that, then you hope that the plant grows, and the weather doesn't destroy it, and then you hope that you're going to have a harvest, and then you actually have to go and do the harvest, and then you have to get the harvest to market or to your table. It's a lot of work. It's a long-term vision. And I think that at the end of the day, it's incumbent upon us as policymakers to take a long-term stance, a long-term vision of what building, even one niche of small business in Maricopa is. And again, there's no right way to do it. There are wrong ways, and there are ways in which we do nothing, but I think that when we look at the simple fact that tonight, we've heard that this place has been in existence for what, two and a half years now? Maybe going on three? And we've had 45 testimonials tonight as to how the value is helping them grow? Well, yeah, they haven't reached 45-person companies yet, all of them, if any of them. But what they're striving to become is a company that is successful, that makes that one person successful, maybe makes three people successful. I know that in discussions with Glenda, she told me she'd had five, four or five people hired. When I first met Glenda, she was just trying to find some business for herself, you know? And it's all these types of things that I think that when you see the growth, I would love to see that this city has an incubator that is three times the size, four times the size. I'd love to see that we have a tech accelerator, an accelerator in general, on top of that, that takes it from incubator, accelerates it, and spits it out as something, as the next great thing, whatever that might be. And that's up to you all as to what that becomes. So as such, I can't see a reason and an explanation not to. While I appreciate all points of view, and I appreciate questions, that I think that this has been a very enlightening meeting. I'm glad that it's been recorded. I'm glad that it's the public record. I'm glad that it's something that when you get these questions of why we have this and what it does, that you'll be able to go and pull this record and utilize it and say, this is what it does. And I expect and can't wait for this discussion again in the future, when we get to see four years out, and five years out, and six years out, what has become, because we as policymakers set the vision of what we hope it will be many, many years from now. So with that, if there is no additional comments, I would like to motion and move that we approve this item.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much for your work, and congratulations. That will take us to item 10.1, the Mayor and City Councils Discuss and Possibly Take Action on Approving Request by Youth Coordinator Heather Lozano to Appoint New Members to the 2016-2017 City of Maricopa Youth Council. This is for discussion and action. Heather, thank you for your patience.
It looks like we need to take a moment. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor Brown. I come to you tonight with 16 applicants for the 2016-2017 Maricopa Youth Council. Not sure where my slide is, but that's okay, we don't really need it. Just to recap a little bit of last year, we held our first youth council, our youth town hall, where members of the Maricopa Unified School District and Sequoia Pathway were able to attend. We had amazing discussions, amazing topics, led by youth council, facilitated by youth council. We continued our Copa Care Packages Drive. We participated, and we actually were challenged to a kickball game by the Police Athletic League. I didn't win, but that's okay. Some of our police officers are a little competitive. We were also, we also got to play Jeopardy with the Age Friendly Game Committee, and have been invited back to attend, so we're going to have to figure out something to get going there. And I'm proud to announce that we will be participating in the Copa History Hunt. I registered our team today. So with that, without further ado, I just suggest that, may I suggest that we appoint all 16 applicants this year to term, not look at doing a, any alternatives or alternates because I would hate to see two of them just go that route, and just have a large council. At meet and greet last week, I did talk about growing our mentorship program, where I will have them select next week at our youth council meeting, a council member that they would like to be in a mentorship relationship with, and ask that they email you after each week, and open those lines of communication, and maybe join you guys one day during a work session meeting. I'm looking forward to some great opportunities for the youth this term, maybe some ribbon cutting or groundbreaking ceremonies, because we have some wonderful things happening in the city. Thank you.
Perfect. Any questions for Heather at this time? I know that most of you attended the meeting the other day. Councilwoman Chapados.
Heather, thanks so much, and to our youth council applicants, thank you for stepping up and being the leaders in your community and your school that you are. The one thing that I want to stress the importance of is, we've seen a number of youth council members come before us, and I just want to make sure that you understand the commitment that you guys are making. Giving of your time is important, and giving back to your community is vital for our success, but you need to make sure that you show up. If you make this commitment, please honor it. It's important to your fellow council members, it's important to your city, it's important to this council, to our staff, and it's important to our residents. So thank you again, and Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve appointing all 16 applicants to the Maricopa Youth Council.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Have a first and a second, a race for second, third, fourth, fifth, that's great. Wonderful, a first and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh oh, we got to back it up. Back it up, sorry. Before we go there, we have a first and a second on the table.
You don't really say any other comments.
I know. Sorry.
That's okay, no problem. I'm really excited about the fact that we have a significant number of new applicants, and what I want to say to the new applicants, as well as those that are repeats, is really take advantage of what your council members offer. I know that last year, I had three members, and I had one who was awesome, who's here tonight, who showed every time, and took advantage of everything that I had to offer. If you don't take advantage of what a council member has to offer, then you're missing out big time. So for those that are new, take advantage of the offerings that the council members have. I really encourage you to do so.
I appreciate that. I encouraged that at our meet and greet. Guys, I didn't know my mayor, I didn't have, I've never been to a ribbon cutting, so I encourage them to really.
Well, I'm going to brag on Nicole. She accepted every invitation that I offered out there. So, and I think she learned tons, not from me, but from those that we were with. So, I mean, hopefully from me too, but, you know, from those that we were with. So I really encourage it.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Councilwoman Smith. Before we move to the vote, that I had to back up because I got ahead of myself, so my apologies. With that, I know that there's been a request, if we could have all of the youth council members come up, and council members will go down and take a picture. So if that's the case, there's a motion and a second on the table, all in favor, favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So let's go down for a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Well, members of the council, please join us. All right. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Thank you, congratulations. This would be a totally different dynamic without the two of them together.
No excuse for not doing your homework tonight.
Again, congratulations to our new youth council, we appreciate it and look forward to all the work they'll do for us. Item 10.2, the Mayor and City Councils Discuss and Possibly Take Action on Approval of Presiding Judge Agreement with Judge Lyle Riggs. This is for discussion and action. Dennis, I'll turn it over to you for any brief statements.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions. This is the presiding judge agreement to appoint Judge Lyle Riggs as the presiding judge of the Maricopa Municipal Court.
Any questions, council? I don't think that is pretty straightforward, so with that, can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second. A motion and a second, so without further ado, any additional questions on the matter? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, this is, item 10.3, this is ordinance for the Mayor and City Council, City of Maricopa, amending section 2-82 of the Maricopa City Code to add the Cultural Affairs Committee as a standing committee. This is for discussion and action.
Honorable Mayor.
City Manager Rose.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this item was first presented to you on September the 20th in a work session. There were two issues that were central to your discussion. One was the creation of a mission statement for the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee. The mission is to promote an environment that fosters diversity and inclusion within Maricopa. The second issue was the establishment of core principles, guiding principles, should the council decide to create the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee. The first one was to coordinate annual events, or an annual event or events that celebrate diversity in Maricopa. Number two, provide a forum for community members to directly express their views about diversity in Maricopa to local government. The third item was provide an annual report to the mayor and council that incorporates recommendations on how to more effectively communicate and serve all of their community.
Perfect. Any questions, council? I think we discussed this, yes, Councilwoman Wade?
No, I had no questions.
No questions. Well, with that, you looked eager to go ahead and motion something, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Move to adopt the motion, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor. Can I do a roll call?
Oh, it's a roll call, isn't it? Here we go again.
Councilmember.
I even wrote it down here. Geez, it's been a long night.
Councilmember Kimball.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapados.
Yes.
Councilmember Wade.
Yes.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Yes.
Mayor Price.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next one is also an ordinance, so it will also be a roll call, that's for me and you all. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council, City of Maricopa, amending sections 3-111 through 3-124 of the Maricopa City Code regarding the establishment of a fire department and providing for the severability and the effective date thereof. This is for discussion and action. City Manager Rose.
Honorable Mayor, council members, this item was also presented to you in a work session where we explained the desire for the department to change the name to be more reflective of the calls that they service. As indicated by Chief Lefler, the fire department now responds to about 85% of their calls being medical in nature. And so it is recommended that the council approve the changing of the fire department's name to reflect the City of Maricopa Fire Medical Department.
Council, any questions on the matter this time? Councilwoman Chapados.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge Chief Lefler and the members of Maricopa Fire for, I've had a chance to talk with quite a few of the firefighters in the last few weeks, and the amount of consideration and time that they put into weighing this new name change, I think reflects on the caliber of service that our Maricopa Fire extends to our community. So Mayor, I move to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Yes.
I hope I'm not aligning, it's not on the item particularly, but I just want to compliment the fire department on how they respond, and the things they respond to. I'm aware of an incident where a person was stranded on the road, and the fire department came to their aid and their rescue to get them off of the road. So I just want to acknowledge that, Chief, so that here, when I have an opportunity to do that, that we have an excellent fire department, and they respond to the community and the citizens. I mentioned once before another incident, I just happen to be these places where I see these things, Chief, but they're doing a great job, and I just want to acknowledge that at this time.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Wade.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapados.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimball.
Yes.
Mayor Price.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. Takes to item 10.5, the Mayor and City Councils Discuss and Possibly Take Action on Rescheduling the November 15th regular Tuesday meeting and moving it to Monday, November 14th, 2016. This is in part because of the fact that some of us will be at the NLC conference on that date, and so that is the proposal, to move it to Monday. Any discussion on that? Any problems with that? We're still holding two meetings at that time, just moving it to an earlier date. Yes, Councilwoman Manfredi.
I have no problem moving the meeting. My only, I guess my only issue would be that unfortunately, what we'd be doing is moving it to the night of DECA on November 14th, that, the Shark Tank on the 14th, and we missed it last year. So that was my only issue, and I know we can't move it to the 16th, 17th, or 18th, because everybody being NLC. On the 15th, of course, we're moving it from that. Is it possible to move it to the following week?
That's a good point. Let me look at the calendar here.
The 22nd?
Yeah, it does move it to the, yeah.
Yeah, Thanksgiving, right?
Well, so, well, it is, but what if we were to do it on the 21st? I mean, that's the Monday.
And I hate to say to move it just for that one thing, but, you know, seeing these kids, and I went to the first Shark Tank, and we missed the last one, and I don't want to miss this one.
Does anyone have, do we have an issue with the 21st, which is a Monday? It's just the following, wow, yeah.
Honorable Mayor, I don't believe that we have any items advertised from a planning perspective, so that should, we should be able to accommodate that.
Okay, so let's, let's change the, can we change that on the agenda item here? I mean, that's relevant to the agenda, so we're moving it, instead of the 15th, we'll move it to the 21st. Again, it's the week of Thanksgiving, but good catch.
Good catch, Man, Mr. Manfredi.
Yeah, definitely.
I was going to just call you Man Freddy.
Just add the "Freddy" after, it would have been fine.
There you go. So moving it to the 21st, any issues with that? Seeing none, is there a motion, please?
Some.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. And then last but not least, on the regular meeting agenda, before we go into some long e-session time, council, I know you're excited, let's move to item 10.6, and the Mayor and City Councils are here, a presentation regarding the fire department hydrant inspection and flushing program. This is for discussion only.
I am excited about this.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you for listening to this issue. This has been an issue with me since the first week I came on the job. We have struggled to accomplish this. We have approached this from many different angles, and what we've done, or what particularly Chief Storm has done in the last six to eight months has made some headway. And what we would like to do, first off, I'd like to thank him for all his efforts because he has been the tip of the spear on this. With that said, Chief Storm will give you an update as to where we are. Some of it, we don't have some of the answers to it yet, but we're working diligently, and we have been for three years now. So with that, I'll give you, Chief Storm.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Lefler. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like Chief Lefler said, I've been here two and a half years. Two of the first tasks he gave me were to review the hydrant program, and to review our ISO rating. Those two things are actually coming together right now. We have an ISO survey coming out in two weeks. Hopefully, we can get our rating up, the score better, which would be a huge benefit. A huge portion of that score is for water. So with that being said, some of the regulation, the agencies that regulate fire hydrants, maintenance, flows, record-keeping, distances, all that, are, the two biggest ones are National Fire Protection Agency, which is actually NFPA 25, and the International Fire Code, they're a little bit out of order there, which is what Maricopa has adopted as the fire code. The ISO Insurance Services Office, which rates all fire departments on a one to nine scale, and the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, which we will be going for eventually in the hopefully near future, both of those recognize either one of those on there. The regulatory agencies, the recommendations for pertaining specifically to hydrants, our NFPA says flushing, testing, inspecting, and maintenance of fire hydrants every other year at a minimum. One of our plans was to divide the city in half and do half one year, half another year, so we'd be testing them every year, just not the same ones. The International Fire Code, which is what we follow, is the flushing, testing, inspecting, and maintenance of the fire hydrants annually and after each operation. So if we used one at a fire, obviously, we knew it would work. With that, just to give you a quick, these are basic fire hydrants, these are the ones we have here. We have dry barrel, which is on the picture on the left. When we first got here, the way they were testing them, it was a gentleman's agreement between Global Water and the fire department. What they would let them do would take the caps off, make sure that they came off, they would allow them to open the hydrant to hear a gurgle, and then they would allow them to shut. No water was ever flowed, so there was never any guarantee that water actually came out of it. During fires, we did have brown water issues because of the lack of flowing. And working with Global currently, we are, they are working on a flushing system, which we'll go into in a few minutes, and they are, have verbally committed to allow us to open them to make sure that they're all flowing, take the caps off, and ensure they're all in working order. Some of the reasons we do the hydrant inspections and flushing is to reduce sedimentation buildup in the piping. That causes the brown water. It also occludes some of the flows. We don't currently test flow rates for the hydrants, which we will be working towards in the future. The sedimentation, I should say, that we have had a couple episodes in the past of affecting a couple of vehicles that were pumping at fires, which kind of, which clogged the intake, which we had to get a second engine in to help. To Global's credit, they have, we've been working with them on flushing. They do currently have a flushing program underway, which will be on another slide. The other reason we like to do that is to make sure the hydrants are functioning properly, the caps come off. We've had many where the caps have broken because they've been either corroded on there, they just haven't been taken off in 10 years. Some of them don't open. You know, we, and we got some pretty big boys and they can, if they can't get them off, then there's no hope. Again, in the future, testing the flow rates of the hydrant to determine if it provides adequate GPMs for fire department operations. This goes into ISO and credit, or accreditation. We do have to, especially insurance companies, they want to know if the hydrants in front of, in the neighborhoods, they allow enough water to put the fires out. Commercial is even more important because of the size of the buildings, to know if we have the adequate GPMs. Currently, we do not have any of those. We'll go into that in a second. We've been requesting them. According to our deputy fire marshal, we've been requesting from both Maricopa Water and Global Water since 2003 for them to provide us these records and to date, we've been unsuccessful in getting those. We are working with both of those to change that. The other thing, the deputy fire marshal stated was there are enforcement is an issue because of the private-public difference. Currently, the directional flowing is what Global's doing. So what they're doing is all their hydrants are on loops, so what they can do is turn, close valves and directionally flow the water. So if there's 10 hydrants in a, in a loop, they'll open the last one, flush that entire loop. What they've given us verbal, again, verbal approval to do is to go back and test those other nine, because the only one we know works is the 10th one. They did go back and they have two main tanks that they're working on now, two million, 1.5 million storage tanks. They started cleaning those because they found out that even flushing them without cleaning the source is just bringing more dirty water through. So that's currently what they're doing, which leads us to Global. It's the primary resource, water resource, or primary water utility in Maricopa. Approximately 4,000 hydrants in the city. We're going to have a more accurate count on that once they get done with all their flushing. They are currently, with their flushing, they have completed Cobblestone, Rancho El Dorado, the villages, and Province. They're working their way north to south. So all those in those four areas have been flushed. All the hydrants have not been checked yet because we are waiting for a written, a formal agreement from them, which we haven't gotten back yet. They do not currently report any hydrant flow data, flushing or maintenance records to the fire department. What we do know is since 2012, what happens is when they put a new hydrant in, our deputy fire marshal shows up, there's a representative from Global that shows up, there's an independent third party, and some of the stuff on the presentation there. They, the third party conducts the flow test, we witness it, Global witnesses it, we both get records. They don't supply us, we get our own from the independent. Now, that's only been since 2012. So anything in prior to that, we don't have anything on. They recently implemented their hydrant tank flushing program. They're expected to complete, hopefully, they said by early 2017. They've been working very diligently doing this. They've been working with us. We're working on different aspects. Another thing we're working on is GIS for where all their, they have a system where work, our development services is also working with them to get that into Smart Gov, which we can utilize. So that would be, that would be a huge asset. We do have paper maps. We would like to get them electronically, too. They verbally approved us to check the hydrants that they currently are flushing that haven't been checked, and we are awaiting the formal agreement, which they are under review and we, we haven't heard back yet. The other one is Maricopa Domestic Water. This has, they have five sub-districts listed above. There's 52 hydrants within the city limits. There's 44, which would be basically the heritage district. They have eight, which is seven ranches, which is this area here. They currently are flushing their own. As they stated, we have in the past had a gentleman's agreement with them where we were allowed to flush them, too. We never did, there was no flow rates checked on any of those. Again, we've requested that information, which we have not gotten back. The other thing is they have 14 other hydrants under their jurisdiction, 12 in Papago and two way south. Those aren't in our initial response area. They perform their own flushing, currently do not report any of the inspection records or flow data to the fire department. We did send them the same agreement we sent Global. They did recommend to their board to not approve the inspection agreement. And with that, the reason we want to do this, our objectives with this program is to ensure all the hydrants function properly, we don't have any failures, we don't have any catastrophic anything for our safety and the safety of the residents, reduce the sedimentation as much as possible, eliminating or reducing the brown water issue and any issues with pumping at fires. Ensure that all the hydrants are properly located in mapping software. Some of the older maps have had hydrants in areas where they weren't and some, they weren't marked, but there were hydrants, so we are working with them. They have a new, they have a new software that they're working with, so we're going to get the two together, hopefully in the near future, and we'll all have the same records. They also ensure, we want to ensure that all hydrants provide the fire flows that are adequate for the fire department operations and meet national standards. Like I said, that's huge for ISO, they want to know that, and to become accredited, same thing. And then we want the hydrants to be, hydrant records and data to be provided to us annually as a, as a standard operating procedure by both, by both entities. With that, is there any question?
Counsel, questions? Yes, vice mayor.
Chief, what is an adequate GPM?
GPM, NFPA states, and I believe the International Fire Code is 1,500 gallons a minute for an hour. It has to maintain that flow.
For an hour?
Thank you.
Counselwoman Chapados.
NFPA is two hours, International Fire Code is one.
Chief, I've got a couple of concerns on this. Kind of starting at the beginning, who determines where the fire hydrants are located as part of the development process? Do you guys have input on that? Is it strictly based on what kind of units are being built, whether it's residential, commercial, access points? Who determines that and how many?
Per the code, I'm going to, because I know NFPA, and then it's, it's different in residential and commercial. Residential is 500 feet apart, that's stated in there. I believe when developments, or developers come in and they have that, they're doing an area, those are already plotted out based on standards like those.
Okay, so of those hydrants that, let's use Province as an example, because it's a fairly big development, is every hydrant, new hydrant that's put in tested or just certain ones?
When they're put in, each and every one is tested.
Okay, and then supposedly, the ideal is to do it every other year or every year, depending on, you know, maybe what kind of.
Resources, yeah.
Okay. Help me to understand that in all the presentations you guys have done for us, the ISO accreditation is extremely important, it affects our insurance rates, it affects a lot of things, but yet there's no regulation that we can point to to say, you have to let us do this. Help me understand what the history is there, why there isn't any stricter regulations and why, especially private water companies, or in our case, you know, you've got a public and a private company, why no standards? It doesn't make sense that the ISO is so focused on, on that, but yet we can't enforce that.
Can I start? No. Absolutely. Right now, based on how things, how the city came into being and all the agreements that were handled at those times, I think is, is the beginning of some of them. A lot of them are handshake agreements, a lot of them are verbals, nothing's ever been formalized or written. According to our deputy fire marshal, his enforcement on those is almost impossible.
Okay, so right now, I mean, if we were to pursue anything, do we even have any legal recourse? Dennis, maybe you want to weigh in on this? I'm not sure, do we have any, any legal recourse or is just?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I know that in the beginning, we were trying to get an agreement with Global, and that was the primary negotiations that were going back and forth. I mean, they traded drafts of the agreement, and it's been quite some time that Global's had the agreement. I don't know of any specific enforcement mechanisms. We can clearly look further. I know there was someone else in our office that was working on this, but I don't think so. I think that they, they looked to the Corporation Commission to see if they would have any regulatory authority over Global to force that, and I'm not sure they got inadequate, I mean, I think the Corporation Commission wasn't too willing to help, so, I mean, I think we can try to evaluate other methods we can do to try to force them to cooperate.
And I guess just kind of from my own understanding, am I correct in assuming that the purpose of a fire hydrant is for fire suppression, or do they serve another function?
Go ahead. You want, if I could just back up real quick on your first one with what Dennis was saying? We, they, they had an agreement with us, we went back and forth on that, and just lost my train of thought because I was thinking of both at the same time. Go ahead, you can.
You know, back to your first question, basically, we went with them and we talked about enforcement. We talked about the, the right thing to do in terms of making sure that the hydrants are functional and so on. The, the first meeting did not go well. They were, we talked about the ACC and their response was that the ACC has no jurisdiction over them in terms of maintenance or, or anything of that nature, that they basically determine We kind of got to a standstill, and that's when we turned to the legal department to say, okay, what's our next step? And we went through an arduous process to legally, to try and develop a contract to just make it work. You know, our, our goal is to test the hydrants, period. We want to make sure that they're clear and they're running and they're working. It's been a difficult process. And to answer the second question, I, I really don't think there is, common sense says that they will follow NFPA guidelines. You know, they, they put their hydrants 500 feet apart because that's what it says in the NFPA guidelines, yet for the flushing and maintenance of those hydrants, it, it doesn't seem to apply. So to answer your question, I'm, I'm kind of at the mercy of the legal system to say, how do we, how do we support this?
Well, both of you come with a lot of experience from working in other jurisdictions. How do other jurisdictions handle this issue? Is this something unique to us?
Well, the big difference is they're municipal.
Municipal.
Systems.
Okay, so.
This is, this is a private system versus.
Have you had any experience with, in another jurisdiction with a privately owned utility company where this has been an issue?
No. No. And going back to that first question, I did contact the Arizona Corporate Commission because that's where the standstill was. They were saying, well, we're not, we're regulated by them, but they don't have any regulations pertaining to maintenance, flushing, flow testing. I actually called them, talked to somebody, actually puzzled them, gave them, first time in 20 years, they heard the question. But the answer I got was if they don't have a standard set, it falls back to the AHJ, which would be us, the city, and that would be the International Fire Code. So that would be everything in your packet on the first thing, testing every year, providing us with records and stuff like that. But then we go back to the enforcement issue.
And there are other communities also that have had the same issues, dealing with a private water company versus a public, public water company. And we've contacted all of them to see what they did.
And?
Buckeye, Buckeye bought them.
Yeah.
Buckeye, I'd contact, I've been in touch with their fire marshal, they've had the same issues for years, 10 years.
Kingman.
Kingman, numerous things, all the same issues. Buckeye said, they just said they finally got tired of waiting for records. They had a couple incidents on fires where there was a hydrant that was locked out, they were never told about it, they had no other water source for that fire. So they just went ahead and started testing them on their own and kind of see where that led.
Under that fire code, then, I mean, in that particular case, and I don't mean to, you know, wax philosophical here, but if, if at the end of the day, there was an issue in that particular Buckeye case, did they not have legal standing to say, hey, you know, this, as a resident of our city, there was no fire protection to which they paid for because there was no water, because it was a private company, and therefore it was locked out and there was no communication and, you know, you had a duty in a, in a, you know, what's the word, you just had a duty to, to deal with that, and they, and they chose not to. Is there not legal standing there, then?
We defer over there.
I knew that was coming, but that, that was so well-choreographed.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, we can continue to look, but I mean, I think it's, they're doing, I mean, they're talking to a lot of the communities involved. I mean, we can see whether somebody at the ACC that would be friendly, more friendly to force a private company might be helpful, but thus far, we, I mean.
Well, certainly, you know, it's not that you look for a lawsuit by any means, but, but I just, I just anticipate that at some point, just like Buckeye may or may not, I mean, maybe they, maybe the fire was burning down a house that nobody cared about, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what the issue was, but, but at the end of the day, in a, in a place where we, if we, if we suffer these problems here, that at some point, it's a law of numbers game that says that it's going to happen, and somebody's going to enjoin the city in that lawsuit, saying, you knew, you subscribed to this, and you should have done something about it, and what is it that we're going to do? And I think that that's the major question here before us. Clearly, that's why you're talking to us about this. But I think that's what scares me, is that we seem to be stuck in this circle of not knowing, and it's not for lack of trying on our part, it's for lack of enforcement and jurisdiction. Yet at some point, if a court has to make a decision, they'll make a decision based on the rules as they're written, and we're stuck, and that's really frustrating.
Mayor, vice mayor, members of the council, if I may add, we have had two incidents, as, as Chief Storm alluded to. We were able to overcome those incidents. We have re-engaged heavily with Global. We have re-engaged heavily with Global Water in particular, and they are making an effort. I, I have to say, they are making an effort now, and their system is a little different than I'm used to, but they had a water engineer there who seemed to know what he was talking about, and, and we're kind of in a wait-and-see pattern to see how well this works. The Maricopa Domestic, that's, it's a whole different animal, that goes way, way back to way before our time, and there were some agreements or non-agreements or whatever, but it's, it's clear that Global is trying to engage. We're at the infancy of this, of this process to see if it's actually going to work, but I want to make it clear that they are trying to rectify the problem.
Thank you. We're going to go back to Counselwoman Chappell, who wasn't finished, and we'll go over to Counselwoman Smith afterwards.
So, Chief, of, of these incidents that we have, I mean, obviously, one of the concerns is some of the stuff that's in the Heritage District, which is Maricopa Domestic. Seven Ranches is, is a separate district, but it falls under Maricopa Domestic?
Yes.
From a public safety standpoint, do you have any concerns of lack of fire suppression capabilities if we were to have an incident there, whether it was a fire, a spill, a hazmat situation? I, I'm looking for ways that we can help you, and I'm just not sure what we can do.
I could say this, specifically to Maricopa Water, they do not have enough water storage for what we require. I think it's 250,000 gallons, and I think they have half of that. And again, that's-
And the mains.
And the mains.
And you think we have half of that based on something they've told you, or some report they've given you?
According to Deputy Fire Marshal, with the existing tanks he's aware of, that they have a little over 100,000 gallons, and 250,000 is required to require the 100, the 1,500 GPM for an hour. So, they will supply water, will they supply enough water, is the question. Probably not.
And, and they also, they don't have the records currently to support any, any justification of their capacity in terms of flow rates or anything of that nature.
Well, one of the questions I ask, and forgive me if you answered this, I just didn't hear it, is the purpose of a fire hydrant for fire suppression, or do they serve another function as well?
According to a letter we've just received from Maricopa Water in answer to our request for an agreement, they state that theirs are primarily for flushing the system for water quality, to enhance the water quality. As a secondary, they allow the fire department access for use during an emergency operation or for fire training. But in their letter, they state that their primary is for water quality, for flushing the lines.
And I believe that letter was addressed to the council.
Wow.
And our attorney is aware of it as well.
So, outside of Global Water, we have a total of how many water tanks that would service the Heritage District or Seven Ranches? One in each?
I think there's three, and I think they're smaller, they're smaller makeup. The total is 100, I want to say it's a little over 100,000.
Okay.
Now, comparatively speaking, Global Water has two 1.5 billion tanks, and they have a 2.5 million tank that's not operational yet, but it will be soon because of development, and that's in Rancho Mirage.
Is that a reserve tank, or is that going to be another?
It's a reserve tank.
Counselwoman Smith.
So, I want to go back to when we had this first discussion during the CIP, and we're talking about public safety first, and then we're also talking about costs to our city, because during the CIP, we talked about the fact that there's no guarantee that the hydrants will work, so there's the public safety issue, and then also the fact that the ones we have attached to have, in many ways, destroyed parts of our pumper trucks and costing us millions of dollars. So, both of those elements are hugely important to me, particularly public safety, but then also spending a million dollars on a new pumper truck, too. And when I hear you talk about the fact that Global Water is making progress, I'm, I'm not, and it may just be my interpretation, I'm not getting this overwhelming feeling of success. And you talked about some of the communities that they've already started, but yet I haven't seen any, any notifications go out, looking for the dirty water, what to do about the dirty water when it happens. And so, if they have made progress, shouldn't we have seen some of those notifications? Shouldn't I be hearing from residents that are experiencing dirty water, if it really is happening? So, I'm kind of looking for your input, because I could be making my own interpretation based on my own biased opinion. Is, are things really happening, and if so, why are the records so challenging? Because it's a new program, the record should be right there, and they should be able to be something that we turn, they turn over to the city, so that you have the information for your certification, and I'm just not seeing all the dots connected, and so it's a huge concern to me for the reasons that I mentioned at the beginning.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Smith, I believe they have made some progress. We are not involved in their flushing program. From a publication standpoint, from a participation standpoint, we are simply allowed to go back after them in a verbal agreement, and we have not done that, because we do not have a written agreement. So, whether it's succeeding or not, in terms of clearing the water up, we can't tell you.
And you have no evidence yet. Have you received any input, feedback on people messing with fire hydrants, and hey, is that, are they really the right people doing that? I mean, have you, have you seen any sign that it really is happening?
I, I believe it is happening, and I think Chief Storm has gotten some, he's been in contact with them about the areas that they have done. The, the outcome of that, we're, we're not aware of, in terms of the quality of the water, the sediment levels, and things like that. It's, believe it or not, this is three years strong, and I'm encouraged that anything is happening, frankly, so, but it's so early in the process, and until we get a written agreement that we can go back after them and be held harmless in terms of checking these hydrants, we're not, we're not following them, because we simply can't.
So, tell me a little bit more, and I think this is my last question, tell me a little bit more about the concept that you were discussing regarding when you flush. It's, part of the process is flushing back into another system, but there's so much sediment there, it creates more of a problem, and to me, that speaks so huge of a water quality potential problem, and this, it just really concerns me, and it sounds like the system itself has just not been well-maintained, and I just want to know, at what level should I be concerned about regarding that whole process?
I think the, the potable water, which is what you drink, is a little different than the public safety water, there is a little bit overlap with where the brown water comes in. What they did was, they actually did start flushing the hydrants, and like Chief Leffler said, their new engineer who's there, who's got a vast resume in water, water departments, he decided, you know what, they're just flushing dirty water through the system, because it starts with dirty water, going out dirty water. So, they started by cleaning the tanks, the holding tanks, and then all the water comes from there. And by directionally flowing, they're, they're able to flow the water the direction they want and pull all the sediment out. I know they, when our last meeting with our hydrant program manager and them, they said there was a couple loops they did that they had to flow the hydrant for 45 minutes to get it clear.
I think the theory, at least my understanding when we met, the theory makes sense. It's different than I'm used to, but the theory makes sense to me. But the proof, I think, would be when we get back in there and we can double-check the hydrants and make sure the caps come off and, and all those things, and sediment in a, in a system is there regardless.
Sure.
It's in every system.
Sure.
And that's why you have to do it, you know, every year or every other year. My concern, at least from the very beginning, was that we had never done that. The, the process they were using was, was frankly, I think, making it worse, and it was breaking hydrants and stems and, and all sorts of things. So, I kind of went on a mission, and then when John came on board, I said, "This is, this is what we got to do." And like I say, I'm encouraged that they're, they're moving in that direction, and so far, I think their theory makes sense.
But wouldn't you have expected to have at least heard from one resident?
When we did it, we did a test one, when we first got this going before it kind of all went to a halt, yeah, we, we had complaints before we even started flowing water. Yeah, we did have some, and in my history, doing this, yeah, you should, one or two, you know.
So, it just leaves me a little suspicious, that we haven't heard from one person.
I think the complaints are probably going, if they are, they're going to Global Water.
Instead of the city?
Right.
Really, you, I, wow, I would think the city would have heard from one person that said, "Hey, Steve's got to do something here." But, okay, I, I would just like to encourage us to give direction, to see what else we possibly can do. I, I mean, I know we've really tried hard, and I know you've worked it really hard. There's got to be something.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Smith, I think one option that you might want to take a close look at is whether there is a legislative solution.
Yeah.
Because if this is impacting us, it's impacting other cities.
Right.
And so, we may have more of a discussion once we get to discussing our legislative platform.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you. And thank you, guys, for all the work that you've done on this, thank you.
I had a quick one question as it pertains to records. I guess what my question stems from is, do you think there's any hope they'll ever get those records? I mean, in reality, because I guess my question stems to the extent that, where's the enforcement arm? I mean, there's, there's no enforcement arm to ever come in. This isn't like the IRS is going to come in and audit your, your receipts and your records, right? So, if there's no enforcement arm, why is there, I mean, this is the carrot and the stick, right? I mean, there's, there's no stick here. So, there, there probably is no ability for anybody, or any desire to ever keep a record, especially considering some of these are older than, than Global. I mean, the, the older district has been around for so much longer, but, but where is there hope that we will actually see records here?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, the only thing I can think of, and, and I think this is more in Dennis's area, but a private water company, if, if something fails, and there's a lawsuit, if something bad happens and there's a lawsuit, typically, people go after anybody and everybody with money, and that would include the water company.
Of course.
And I think it would behoove the water company to have some sort of backup records to, to defend themselves. That's my personal opinion. I don't know, I would, I would just think that common sense would say that it would be in their best interest to have some sort of record-keeping, and they are, they are being somewhat responsive to this. We haven't received anything yet, but they are working on it. I think the gentle, I should say, significant pressure we've put on them about ISO and about future accreditation has drawn a spotlight on them, and I'm not sure that they're real comfortable with that. So, we have been pressuring every which way we can to say, "Look, this, they're going to come into the city, they're going to test our system, which includes your water system, and they need this data, and they also know that if they do not produce the data, and we can't produce it to the ISO, it'll affect insurance rating and so on." So, I think it's in their best interest, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it would be in their best interest to, to have something. Now, how far back it goes, that would be another story altogether, because I don't know that it's been a priority in the past.
Counselwoman Chappell.
Chief, when the ISO comes in to test, will they test in all the districts?
You know what, ISO is mainly a record, it would be more accreditation, would be where they'd actually go out and arbitrarily pull a hydrant, you know, test a hydrant, take a, take a reading. ISO is more record-keeping. Both Maricopa Domestic and ISO, or I mean, Global have sent back a pre-survey packet that I sent them, that were completed, which does enlighten us on some things. The thing, going back to the flow rates, even though we test them when they go in the ground, we don't know if those flow rates maintain two years down the road. So, the ones that went in in 2012, that, that flow rate was good for 2012. We don't know how sedimentation has affected it, if there's been a problem in the infrastructure. That's why you test them every year, to, to verify if the readings are the same, are you losing pressure, you know, how that works. That's the importance of, you know, constant testing.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions at this time? This is, was, this item was for discussion only, so with that, I don't know if you need anything additional from us, we just are as perplexed as you are, so, but thank you very much, and we appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Folks, that adjourns our meeting. We're not quite adjourned yet, as we'll move to e-session, but thank you very much for being here. We appreciate you being a part of the conversation, and can I have a motion to adjourn to e-session, please?
So moved.
Is there a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll see you again in two weeks.